Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our Township Council Conference Agenda Meeting on April 14th. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo.
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac.
Here.
Councilwoman Spango.
Here.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Garino.
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight's another good night when we get to recognize the wonderful assets of the township of West Orange, particularly our youth athletes who really bring pride and accomplishment to not only their parents and themselves, but the entire township, and we're entirely and totally proud of all of you. Tonight, the council is here to honor the coaching staff and the members of the Mountain Top Floyd Hole Championship Team. And at this moment, I'd like to have Coaches Sal Anderson and Brad Pallant, the president of Mountain Top League, join me here at the podium.
And Eddie and Eddie Scafidi.
Again, just that the township is very proud of what you've done and the accomplishments you've made. You now have your feeder program starting through the high school to enhance and give us a championship hockey team one day, and I'm sure you will. Brad, Mountain Top League, you as the president, you know the trustee should be very proud of the accomplishments you've done. And of course, to Sal Anderson, who's sitting right there. Thank you, Sal, for what you've done. You've given the kids an opportunity, and Coach, thank you too. I'd like to briefly read this, and then I'll give the copies to the coach, give a copy for each player, and of course, a proclamation for you. Okay. "The West Orange Township Council wishes to congratulate the West Orange Mountain Top League Ice Hockey Program and the winners of Floyd Hole Middle School Full Hockey League Championship. The West Orange Mountain Top League Ice Hockey Program was started last spring by Sal Anderson, Mountain Top League trustee, Brad Pallant, Mountain Top president, and Coach Eddie Scafidi, director of Mountain Top League Ice Hockey. In their inaugural season, they advanced to the league semifinals before losing in overtime to a stronger and more experienced team, which I'm sure you beat this time. This past fall, the team debuted in their first entry into a full league. The team faced competition from Montclair, Paramus, Maua, Aquanix, Busake Valley, and Melbourne. They won the finals in overtime, beating Melbourne by a score of 5-4, winning the championship." Congratulations. "The Township Council is proud to recognize," as I'm sure Mayor Rob Parisi, our mayor, is proud to recognize Stefan Brockman, Davy Campbell, Matthew.
Esquiree.
Esquiree. JP.
Jackalone.
Jackalone. James Hunt. Chris Kelly. Trevor Levine. Lucio Maffey. Will McCullough. Cameron Murphy. Drew Pallant. Cade Pendergrass. Samuel Rojas. Graham Roy. Jonathan.
Strozik.
Strozik. Austin Vecchio. And Casey Vizel, along with her coach Eddie Scafidi. The Township Council congratulates the team on their excellent sportsmanship and wishes them continued success in the future. Congratulations and thank you." If you want to call them up, you can call them. I'm going to say a few words, please.
Great, the kids up.
Okay, thank you.
I don't really have much to say for usual. So I'll just bring the kids up and congratulate them. Just a little background in the game, if anybody's curious, is that these kids were losing 4-2 with nine minutes to go in the game, and I think I might have been the one with his head sulking, and Coach Eddie actually yelled at me that there's plenty of time. And the kids turned around, and somehow, they scored a goal and made it 4-3, and something changed. I don't know what happened. And then they tied the game with like a minute to go, and they just pulled it off. And the team that we played, Melbourne, and I hate to admit, was actually bigger, older, stronger than us, and these kids were... It takes a lot to go out and play in a game like this, knowing that you're maybe overmatched, and then to go out and win is another thing together. So the kids that are here tonight, Sammy Rojas. Big Sammy. The leader in penalty minutes for the West Orange hockey team. Will McCullough. He's our king of the checkers. Here's Casey Vizel. Big brother, who was the captain of the high school team this year. Matthew Esquiree in the back row. I'm not going to call up Trevor. Trevor Levine. By the way, if you ever get a chance to talk to Trevor for like 30 seconds, and he doesn't bring a smile to your face, then something's wrong with you. This is absolutely the most amazing kid I've ever met in my life, and if you get a minute to spend with this kid, you should just take your time with him, because it'll blow your mind what a great kid he is. And of course, last but not least, and holding the trophy, number seven.
Woo-hoo!
Drew Pallant. Give these one of them, take a picture.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool. Here you go, guys. We're going to come up here, I think, and take a picture with the mayor. Come on up. Here.
Brad, come up and run.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Matthew.
Congratulations.
Well.
Of course, you'd be wearing the tie, wouldn't you?
Thank you very much.
Hey, Rick, pull push those seats out a little bit. There you go. Slide in.
Let's talk, Jeff. Jeff, let people behind him.
Yeah, don't move up. Come on, move up to the table. Don't worry, nobody's going to bite you. Come on, bro, get on in. He likes to hit everybody, not everyone. Tighten it up, Victor. Tighten it up. Councilman Kukoviac, tighten in there.
All right, big smiles.
Take a bow in his face.
What a beautiful smile.
Yeah, right. Actually, we've got 10 more kids, but they're actually a tryout. Because we try out. Good job, boys. Good job. Congratulations to you all, and to the parents. Thank you, parents, too. All set, ladies?
Yes, thank you. Sir? I need water. Are they cold?
Yes. Yes, me too. I know.
Anybody want water?
I'll take one, thank you.
Joe, you want?
Yes, thank you.
Just, I'd just like to thank the parents for coming tonight also, and for the great job you did with your children athletes. You should be very proud of them. This is the positive thing you'd like to see, and, you know, we were glad that we were able to do the funding when they first did the program, the initial startup. We felt it was a good investment for our community and for our children, and yes, they're not children really, but they're still ours. I still mine, they're still my children. We congratulate you. We congratulate the parents, because I know when I was doing travel soccer and hockey, you know, their days out, you know, the early practices, and, you know, the traveling all over the place, you were to be commended for that. I know sometimes, you know, people disassume it, but we like to thank you for your commitment. The township likes to thank you for the commitment, and we're very proud of you and your children. So thank you. Okay, moving right along. We will go to council liaison presentations. Councilman Cirillo.
Yes, Council President, our next meeting is this Thursday at 5:30. Meeting of the Dignan House.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kukoviac.
Just very quickly, the West Orange Open Space Commission voted at their meeting yesterday not to recommend to the council the purchase of a little under three acres of property on Wit Bay Drive. We felt it was adjacent, actually, to County Parkland, and we thought it was more appropriate that the county consider it. We voted against it. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Spango.
Thank you, Council President. We had a meeting last night at the Rent-A-House. I did have to leave early, because I had a previous commitment. The financing has been... We're working on phase two for the financing. Right now, there's a bridge loan, and the big question is whether we're going to go FHA or conventional mortgage.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. This morning, the West Orange Chamber of Commerce met. This morning, we have two events coming up. One is the Community Awards Dinner at the Atrium on April 29th. Everyone is welcome to come. This is the community, an annual event where the chamber recognizes nominees from the Police Department, Fire Department, Teacher of the Year, and a Business of the Year. Also, the chamber has... Two years ago, the chamber put out a guide to West Orange, highlighting all of the... I was in highlight, promoting all of the highlights in West Orange. You are welcome to place an ad or contribute any information to this journal if you would like to contribute. You can go to westorangechamber.com. West Orange is spelled out, Chamber. Make sure you're at West Orange, not West Orange, Florida. Seems to be a little confusion on those websites. And check out all that other information. I would also like to invite everyone to go to Luna Stage. They just opened April 9th, the play Tar Beach. It runs Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, Sunday at Matinee. Again, lunastage.org for more information about the play Tar Beach.
Thank you, Councilwoman. West Orange Downtown Alliance, like I've always said, mark your calendars. June 6th is going to be the street fair down on Main Street. Also coming is something that everybody has been talking about, is Slides of America. It's going to be a water slide that's going to be on Mount Pleasant Avenue, coming right down to Main Street. It'll be a great attraction. You'll hear more about it as time moves along, and be getting more information from the Downtown Alliance. Also, just like to update you on some stats on the Downtown Alliance. Thirteen months ago, there were 47 storefront vacancies in the Main Street corridor. As of today, there are only 12. So my congratulations to the Downtown Alliance for its marketing, for its movement, for getting out there and getting people interested in our downtown corridor. So I'm really proud of them, and something we should really look into. And like I said, please come down to Main Street. You know, there's things down here you probably never knew. You don't have to go to the mall, you come right down to Main Street. We have it right down here. Are there any other conference agenda items to talk about? If not, Madam Clerk, will this be the time to come out of conference agenda and request to go into executive session?
We can't start until 7:00.
Until 7:00. Okay. So we've got to wait until 7:00. Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our council meeting for April 14th. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo.
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac.
Present.
Councilwoman Spango.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Garino.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Like to open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the council, just raise your hand, and I'll... Mr. Meyerwitz, come on up.
Hi, Mark Meyerwitz, 19 Howell Drive. At the last council meeting, you all seemed disappointed that nothing had been happening at the downtown redevelopment. And that really shouldn't be surprising, because you haven't been putting any pressure on PRISM to produce. So I'm here to suggest, again, that you need to take control of the... Try and get some control of the situation by putting a deadline on PRISM. Tell them they got to, you know, they have six months, they got a year to get their act together, but you've got to do something to start getting some control of this process back, otherwise, it's going to be another 10 years of watching the weeds grow, you know, and no one in the town will benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Ms. Morelli?
Good evening, Ms. Morelli. How are you? Okay, thank you.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Excuse me. I'm here as a public service again. I was here last meeting, talking about scams that are going on and things that are happening to people. It's frightening what's happening relative to all kinds of scams. Seniors seem to be the most vulnerable, but everybody suffers from what's going on. Just an example, I think I explained to you the one that happened in South Orange. This wasn't a scam, but my friend who lives on... I was talking to Councilwoman Spago about it last night. Lives on Pleasant Alley Way, and his back porch is on Elmwood Avenue. Anyhow, he leaves the screen dim porch door unlocked, walks through, comes into the porch, and there are three people standing there. So he was obviously a little taken aback by it. What happened was, the house across the street is for sale. This is a Realtor bringing two people in, and they're standing there, and they're just talking to him, and he's stunned, because these are people he didn't know. So my word to everybody out there is keep your doors locked all the time. You have to. Another thing is the senior buildings, as well as apartment buildings. People, where they have the codes, they key in, and they ring them in, and you're on Dignan. Okay, what's happening is people... The doorbell rings, there rings in their apartment, they ring and let someone come in, and there's all these strange people walking in the buildings. It's apartment houses as well as the senior houses. Another thing that's been happening is, and it's what happens with me when I go into the Rent-A-House, you walk in, I have a fob to get in, because I'm on the board, I get in, and there are people behind me. I will always say, closing the door, use your own key or call somebody. I want people out there to know, in apartment buildings, in senior buildings, this is really critical. And as far as scams go, they're growing by number. $450 million in the United States last year, just by calls that are made and people being scammed. So that's another thing. Don't let anybody in your house, keep your doors locked, be careful in the buildings where people coming in and out, and don't give out any information over the phone. The IRS never calls people, so they're not going to come and take all your property away the next day. I consider that a real critical issue, and as I said, I'd like to see more done in the township to protect the people, because it's not only West Orange. It's happening all over, and people innocently fall prey to these kinds of predators. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council? Mr. Paglisi?
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo this evening. Just want to share some upcoming events that are happening. Of course, in Branchwood Park, our Cherry Blossom Festival continues on Saturday and Sunday. Saturday is the Children's Fun Run, followed by the Family Day, and then Sunday is the big culmination, which is the Bloom Fest. Unfortunately, the cherry blossoms are not cooperating, and they haven't actually bloomed yet, but we are expecting that to happen probably this weekend or beginning of next week. So we do, if you can't make it to those events, they're great events, they look a lot better when the cherry blossoms are in bloom, but come to the park next week, and you'll see them there. Then on April 25th is Earth Day at the Environmental Center. It's a special Earth Day this year, because this is the 10th anniversary of the Environmental Center, so we do have a few special events planned that day to celebrate that anniversary. And then, May 2nd is our First Collection Day. That's in Cedar Grove, that's the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. And then, May 21st, just want to put on your calendar, there's a job fair at Essex County College, if you do know of anyone who is looking for a job. They should bring plenty of resumes with them that day. And of course, all this information is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org, and I'm sure there's some other events that I'll bring up in the future that are also on that website as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony.
And Anthony, you did leave extra copies of this, please. Thank you for this.
Oh, yes, I did. I did put this on all your seats.
Very nice.
This is also available on the website. This really outlines all the activities for the spring and summer in the... Throughout our park system, from... Doesn't have a complete concert schedule, but it gives the dates of the concert schedule, has some events at the South Mountain Recreation Complex, so really, like I said, I left some at the table, and a digital version of this is also available online. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I close public comment, and I open it to my council colleagues. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Mr. Meyerwitz, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We're eagerly awaiting that final partnership agreement between Dune and PRISM, see what happens. It's my understanding that it's... There's a lot of due diligence to review in the redevelopment agreement, and after that, they're going to draft their, you know, the partnership documents, and eventually, you know, from the finance sector, they're going to issue the LOI, the Letter of Intent, to enter into that partnership. So we're hoping that that's going to be done sooner than later, before we move forward and get a little bit, you know, put a little bit more attention, get a little bit more aggressive, and making sure that that gets done. So that's where that situation's at. And Rosary, thank you. Eagerly... Not eagerly, I was paying attention to all those scams and the potential issues that may arise. Perhaps, I was... You know, what I was thinking was possibly talking to the mayor to see if we can set aside like some sort of hotline. We do it for like snow removal or potholes. I know that the county does potholes as well, just so that we can pay special focus to that issue. But at first, we would have to take a look at, you know, some of the reports to see how prevalent it is in terms of, you know, the activity, whether, you know, whether it's something that is more serious, we don't know. Bottom line is, is that we should pay some attention, and we'll see what... If the mayor would be willing to consider something like that. But thank you for being proactive. And I do notice that, because I've been on both senior boards. I was in the Rent-A-House Board, and I see people coming in and out. And another difficult issue at the apartment houses is when a lot of the residents bring in like a younger element to their apartment, and that can sometimes create some trouble if it's not monitored by management. So that's something that needs to be addressed with management as well. I've heard complaints about that. But, you know, thankfully, on both boards that I've been, it's just, you know, isolated cases, and it hasn't turned into an issue, but it's something to keep in mind in terms of visitors that are coming in. So, thank you again. That's... I'm glad that you're looking into that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Cirillo. Councilwoman Kukoviac.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Meyerwitz, I do also share your concern about this. It's now been two months since council members met with representatives from PRISM and Dune, the proposed or possible potential additional partner there. It's been two months since that meeting, and we haven't heard anything back. I would... I had asked the administration if we had an update, sort of in between the two council meetings, and there's... Mr. Gross had said that they don't have anything new to share. Any curiosity about where things are going? I mean, it's...
No, I mean, the bottom line is, they are working out an agreement between two parties, and that agreement, as far as I know, has not been worked out yet. So once that agreement is worked out, that is when we will move forward. But as of today, that agreement has not been worked out yet.
Have they given us an ETA or any sort of estimate?
We actually did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago to try and hammer some things out between the two parties, and they said that they were going to get back to us. We did not give them a timeline, unfortunately, but my guess is that over the next couple of weeks, we'll be putting a little pressure on it.
Thank you. I also wanted to just follow up on a couple of things that had been asked at previous council meetings that hadn't, I didn't think had been answered, and I just wanted to throw this out. One was the status of improving the sound acoustics in the council chambers. I know Mr. Gross gave me a lengthy answer. Maybe you want to just talk about where things stand with the acoustics.
Can you hear us back there?
What?
We originally had intended to purchase some new microphones, and what we discovered was that the wireless microphones did cause some interference with the taping of our meetings. So we've taken a look back at that, and we've looked at a couple different options, including a brand-new sound system, which is, you know, $10,000 to $15,000, and we're not anxious to spend that. So we looked at basically what we think what the primary complaints are, and some of them can be solved by everyone speaking into the microphones better, but also the possibility of maybe some additional speakers in the back part of the room. We're looking at that, you know, that... Some of the problems with that is potential feedback. So it's... Without getting into a very lengthy discussion and an expensive solution, we're trying a lot of different things to try to make improvements on it without spending a lot of money.
Any sort of ETA on when that's going to happen?
Well, we're trying different things all the time in terms of different settings. When we get it right, I think we'll know it, you know? So it's not... If we knew exactly what we were doing, what to solve the problem, or how to solve the problem without spending a lot of money, we would be able to give you a timeframe on that. But now, we're just kind of trying to tweak it somewhat, try to determine, you know, what... One of the suggestions we have perhaps is, in the meantime, if the meeting room's not full, if everybody moves forward a bit, that will solve some of the problem. If everybody speaks into the microphone, that'll solve some of the problem, and eventually, we'll solve the rear-of-the-room problem through... Hopefully, like I said, without spending a lot of money. We may need to get sound dampeners and things of that nature. Again, that goes in, that starts adding into the cost, and we're trying to stay away from that.
Okay, so please just keep us surprised. There's a lot of people out there that would like to see some improvement, so thank you.
And there's lots of seats up front, so... One thing we haven't heard of complaints about are people being able to hear up front. So if you are having trouble hearing, we suggest you move forward until we get the solution.
Thank you. Also, about, I don't know, three or four meetings ago, there were some questions raised about this Together North Jersey, which is this group that's trying to provide development economic stimulus to some of the communities in northern New Jersey, particularly building around train stations. And I would... I had just asked about this several meetings ago. Mr. Gross said that they didn't have any new information. I'd really like to get some information at the next council meeting, if we could, about what exactly the town is doing or has done with Together North Jersey, just so we could find out if this is something that... They have hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money, and I'd certainly like to try to grab some of that.
I actually did look into that, and if you go online, you can find... There's a whole slew of information, and believe it or not, the reason that we didn't follow up on it, it says the RSPA... RSPSD will be developed over a three-year program, and will be completed by January 15th, 2015. So the program is basically... Has been... What they've done, they've done, and as of January the 15th, as far as I know, the money's been allocated, and they had certain money from, I think it was HUD, it was a grant.
about are people being able to hear up front. So, if you are having trouble hearing, we suggest you move forward until we get the solution.
Thank you. Also, about, I don't know, three or four meetings ago, there were some questions raised about this Together North Jersey, which is this group that's trying to provide development economic stimulus to some of the communities in northern New Jersey, particularly building around train stations. And I had just asked about this several meetings ago. Mr. Gross said that they didn't have any new information. I'd really like to get some information at the next council meeting, if we could, about what exactly the town is doing or has done with Together North Jersey. Just so we could find out if this is something that, they have hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money, and I'd certainly like to try to grab some of that.
I actually did look into that, and if you go online, you can find, there's a whole slew of information. And believe it or not, the reason that we didn't follow up on it, it says the RSPSD will be developed over a three-year program, and will be completed by January 15, 2015. So, the program is basically, has been, what they've done, they've done. And as of January the 15th, as far as I know, the money's been allocated. And they had certain money from, I think it was HUD. It was a grant between HUD and, I think, the Blaustein School of Planning from Rutgers. And I'm pretty sure the program has been completed, but I will do a follow-up just to be sure.
That'd be great. Thank you. And just my last question before the council meeting was about the fire at the Environmental Center. And is there anybody here that can just talk about briefly what happened, what were the cause, what the status, damage?
Yeah, all I can say, all I can tell you is, is there's a, we obviously had a fire up there on Easter weekend. Actually, it was Easter Sunday. And from what we can ascertain, it was just the combustible material that caused it. And there was a very high winds over those two days, like 40, 50 mile-an-hour winds. And once the mulch starts, and this is, again, I'm no expert at this, but this is what I was told, once the mulch starts heating up and the winds get higher, it blows it, and it turns it into a big ball of fire. And unfortunately, that's what happened on Sunday. And I really have to commend not only our fire department, but all the people who worked diligently in keeping the thing under control. And thank God, nobody got hurt. There was really not even much loss of equipment or anything up there, believe it or not. They contained it. I mean, it burned for a while, but they contained the fire. And we got a lot of help from other municipalities, and thank God, it worked out. We were up there on, I think, Thursday with our environmental...
Inspector.
Yeah, right.
Inspector.
What's his name?
Inspector.
Yeah, what's his name?
Wayne DeFeo.
Wayne DeFeo. I couldn't remember his name. Wayne DeFeo was up there with the fire chief, and we're looking at doing some other things that will maybe help us if, in fact, that ever happens again. Luckily, two years ago, we put two fire hydrants in there, ran them in there, which really helped a lot because we had the water right on site to be able to do what we had to do. But as of right now, that's the best answer I can give you. You know, it was really just the combustible material, and it happened because of the, you know, the mulch and the wind.
Yeah. I know the decomposition gets the temperatures up. We just got, we as the council, just got Mr. DeFeo's last two reports today. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read them because they're pretty lengthy. But it talks about, in his March 22nd report, he said that he found a hotspot over 200 degrees Fahrenheit and smoking at his last inspection, and he had to notify the site operator about this fire. And then he also recommended, I'm sorry, I don't know whether there's a fire, it said he was smoking.
Hotspots are different than a fire. He measures the heat on the piles. 200 degrees, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but 200 is basically kind of like the breaking point. Anything above 200 is kind of dangerous.
He also said that, given the volume of material, it's the Class B material, that a fire watch should be maintained. Do you know, was there a fire watch?
They did have a fire watch, and unfortunately, halfway through Easter, they gave the guy off in the afternoon.
Well...
For the holiday.
I happen to think that was, that was a good thing for his family.
You know, unfortunately, that's exactly what happened. And if, again, even if the guy was there, I mean, he wouldn't have been able to stop it, but we may have been able to get there quicker than we did. So, that's really...
The fire travels underground, right?
Yeah.
From hotspots to hotspots.
Yeah, it goes from pile to pile.
The report, it's not clear to me, but it says the class, it says the volumes of Class B remain out of compliance. Was that an issue in this fire?
I don't believe so. I think the Class B material is not mulch. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's all that organic.
Yeah, it's all the organic stuff. I have to check with Wayne to find that out.
Because I think he's been flagging this for a few reports now. So, it says they need to get in compliance, so maybe this would be the instigation to do that.
Oh, everybody and their mother was at that fire, trust me.
I know the smoke was unbelievable.
The DP was there, the forest firefighters, and everybody was there.
The state came, right? State forest fires?
Yeah.
It was a lot of smoke.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Spango?
I'm not going to add anything to PRISM because I think it's been said, but Ms. Morelli, I have spoken to you about this. I agree 150% with you with the scams, as I discussed with you. I have been talking to the mayor. I have a call-in to the police chief. I agree with you, social media is not enough. We need a robocall. But as I said to you last night when we spoke about it, I'd like to see something in writing so that it's guaranteed. To look at a history of scams, I don't know what that's going to do because we never know what's going to happen tomorrow. So, I think that documentation has to be in place, and the mayor is willing to work with me on that. And I think it is a big issue. So, I will keep in touch with you and certainly stay on top of it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you.
Mark, thank you for your comments. We were told that maybe sometime in April, hopefully by May. If that doesn't happen, then everything changes. And Ms. Morelli, thank you again. Public service announcement. Robocalls are very effective. I do agree with Councilwoman Spango about that. We can check with the police department and see if and when that's necessary. Thank you. And I wanted to touch on the Together New Jersey. Having served on the Valley Arts Board, it was really a planning plan that was put together, I think, because Valley Road, that's where we really, there was no representation from West Orange. You know, we found that out. There's no representation from West Orange. But HANDS in Orange owns property on Valley Road. So, when that plan was presented, if you do go to Together New Jersey and see that plan, it does, talks about a skate park on Valley Road, but HANDS owns some of that property on the West Orange side. So, that's why it was included, because HANDS is part of this process. But really, there was no representation from West Orange when they put that plan together.
I know. That's what's so strange. That's what's so strange, that there wouldn't be any representation when part of the plan had to do with West Orange property.
I know. Well, but we'll see where, who knows. Right. It was more, I'm sure it was one of the plans where they give all of the properties that they own to that planner to produce the plan. They happen to be on Valley Road in West Orange, and HANDS does own property over there.
The actual plan, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but the actual plan, HANDS participated as part of the Valley Arts District, and that's why a piece of it came into West Orange.
Right.
Originally, the way the plan was put out, any municipality could participate, but it was most, most of the participants were special organizations like HANDS and other nonprofit organizations. So, HANDS did participate. We did not. And according to what I read, there are going to be some monies allocated to them, but there are going to be some matching funds that they're going to need to come up with before the monies are released. So, I'm not so sure whether that's going to happen or not. But that's where it's at.
And even if they do produce a plan, it isn't anything they could do because it's, you know, if it's not HANDS property, there isn't anything they could do with West Orange property, just because it happens to be on Valley Road. So, we'd have to see when they actually develop the plan and where they go with it.
Yeah, I just know Orange got a ton of money in the grant. I don't remember.
Orange would qualify.
Some of the New Jersey Transit because of the train station.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Nobody is more eager to see the downtown development start. Nobody more. And I can speak for my council colleagues. We all want to see this moving, and hopefully it will. And I'm sure the administration is doing what they need to do, and we'll need what we need to do. Ms. Morelli, thank you. It's important that you've brought this to the council and the public's attention because sometimes we forget about our seniors, who are the most viable and succumbing predators from, you know, from all these scams. And it's something that we as a township need to do, even more so than social media. And to concur, my colleagues, maybe robocalls are the way we need to do. We have to make them alert. We have to look out for them. Some of them are, you know, just too, to the point where they, they're easily fooled and duped, and it's our responsibility to look after them, and particularly make sure our senior developments are safe and that people just can't walk in. So, thank you for bringing, thank you for being an advocate for them. I also have to answer a question. You had a question for me at the last council meeting about the Greek restaurant on Main Street. And I spoke to the owner, I did, and I asked her why. And she said, you know what? It was too small. And she's looking, no, she's actually looking, and she's working with the Downtown Alliance for a bigger location because she felt with the way it was set up, she wouldn't be profitable. So, but I wanted to get back to you on that, Ms. Morelli. So, and so she, and we're going to work with her because, you know, she really wants to put a presence here in West Orange, and so we want to make sure we work for her. And so, I just wanted to get back and answer your question. Other than that, I mean, I have nothing, you know, else to say, so we'll go through that. What I do is, I've been notified that we do have an issue brought up tonight on one of our items that is a legal and personal issue that we need to go into executive session. So, I would like a motion by one of my colleagues for us to go into executive session.
Second. That wasn't a motion, make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We will be back right after our executive session. Thank you.
Come out.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session and reconvene as a township council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The council's now out of the executive session. We were discussing, if you look at the agenda, resolution of 116-15, which has to do with the township hiring an outside attorney not to exceed $5,000 to represent us in a matter of personnel pension issues, and that's what we were in discussion. Okay. We'll move along. Madam Clerk?
Consent of the agenda. Approval of previous meeting minutes, public meeting, March 24, 2015, and special teleconference meeting of March 27, 2015.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
None, mine were answered. None, consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilman Cirillo?
I'm okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Kukrovjak?
Thank you, Council President. I, Mr. Gross had sent me an email, unless I misunderstood it, saying that we had pulled Agenda Item D, Resolution 115-15.
And at the time when I sent you that, we had pulled that, or intended to pull it. And then subsequent to that, there was a correction that was found, not found, but a correction that we needed to have solved, and it was solved, so it remained on. So, the rental amount for that, or the lease amount, that's $3,000 per month, not $2,000.
Okay. Council President, when it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next council meeting because I had asked for some information, and because I think Mr. Gross thought it was not going to be on the agenda, he didn't provide it. So, at the appropriate time, I'd like to make that.
Okay.
Make that.
So, note to Councilman.
Thank you. I'd like to pull Agenda Item A, Resolution 112-15, having to do with Fairview Insurance Associates being appointed broker of record. And also, just wanted to ask a couple of questions about Agenda Item F, Resolution 117-15. It's a memorandum of understanding, asking the council to approve a new four-year labor agreement with the West Orange Firemen's Mutual Benevolance Association, if I could. Just to give people an idea, it's obviously an important labor organization for us. If we could just explain what are the highlights of the agreement and what are the financial implications. I know Mr. Gross had given me some numbers, but...
Sure, I was pulling that resolution, so we'll just pull it, we can pull it and discuss it because I intended to pull that.
Okay, okay. That would be, that would be fine. So...
Save your questions.
Thank you. Just, so, Agenda Item A and Agenda Item F.
F, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Spago?
I'm good. I have some questions about F, but it's already been pulled as well.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
Just Resolution F, 117-15.
I have the same questions with F, so I'll get sort of an address. So, Madam Clerk?
Well, before I do that, Councilman, are you going to make a motion, or before I do the consent agenda?
You want to pull? Yeah, whatever the appropriate time, I'd just like to ask to table 115, 115-15.
So, you're making a motion to table?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question during, I mean, could your questions be asked before we table it? I mean, if you had questions, and now it's still on?
You can ask the questions without tabling.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Instead of tabling, can you do?
I doubt, I doubt he could answer the questions off the top of his head unless...
Oh, okay.
The general question I had was, I wanted to find out what were the, wanted to compare this to the other existing agreements on that monopole. This is, just for everybody, it's one of the wireless cell towers that the town has in town, and we're looking to add another operator there. And I had just asked to, so I, for comparison purposes, this proposed contract with the other existing contracts in terms of the duration and the escalation clauses and where they are in terms of their duration. So, I just wanted to be able to compare this before I had a vote on it. But that's why I'm sure Mr. Gross was relieved when he heard it wasn't going to be on the agenda today.
I can talk a little bit about, I probably can't get into a level of detail perhaps that you're, that you're looking for in terms of the verbiage. These were put together by our attorneys based on our other agreements. So, I have not done a comparison to the other agreements, but my understanding is that they are similar to the other agreements. The amount of $3,000 is either the same or more than where the other, we have four other agreements, where the four other agreements started at. So, this certainly financially, I was satisfied that this was where we needed to be in terms of the actual lease amount. And again, as far as the length, I don't, I don't remember what the exact length of the other. We have one that's coming due, frankly. We just got notified that this, actually, probably next month, they'll be off the tower. So, we are anxious to get a replacement approved so that we don't lose revenue while, you know, in the meantime. So, we're satisfied that the current terms are sufficient.
Well, one of my concerns, this is the first time I've looked at any of these contracts, and I've looked at a lot of them. This is the first one that is set up to basically exist in perpetuity, that there would be, there's no ending to this. They could be doing this 100 years from now, and...
That's really good. No, but I don't mean to flip about it, but the reality is, is that, to the extent that if technology changes, they're still going to have some obligation to us in order if they, you know, so if, as things move on, having an obligation, we're going to need that tower, we need the towers anyway. So...
Well, just to answer that question here in the whereas, that they have the right, Verizon has the right to extend the land lease agreement up to four additional years, five years, at increased rent to the township. So, every five years, it would be reviewed. This is an initial term of five years. So, you know, yes, it may be in perpetuity, but it's still going to be reviewed like a lease every five years, like any other lease.
Well, I don't think, I don't think saying that it's going to be reviewed every five years, certainly Verizon can review it every five years and decide whether they want to go forward. But my concern is that this, further on in the contract, it makes the contract in perpetuity at a fixed cost, at a fixed cost of rent escalation, which, as you know, that over the years will be eaten away by inflation. And so, the money the township will be getting 10, 20, 30 years from now would be considerably less because of the, of inflation. And it's, to my knowledge, is the only contract we have, that has that fixed rate. So...
It says you negotiate additional terms and increase rate.
It doesn't say anything about a fixed rate.
Do you mind?
Yeah, I think...
And increases every five years.
Right, every five years.
Until you get to the last, the last of the four provisions. And I'm sorry, when Mr. Gross told me that this was not going to be on the agenda, I didn't focus on it for the meeting tonight. And I don't feel like I can, I didn't look at the two amended proposed contracts that came out, first one from Madam Clerk, and then one from Mr. Moon of the Trent Law Firm. I haven't even looked at them. So...
They're one of the same.
Yes, both, they're the same contracts. The only thing that changed was 2,000 to 3,000. That's it. That's why we pulled it, because we couldn't get in touch with them to figure out whether they were in for the 3,000 versus the 2,000. And finally, we got a call back, and they agreed to it. So, that's the only thing that changed in the contract, was the number, 2,000 to 3,000. And these contracts basically mirror our other contracts. And as Mr. Gross said, you know, we want to maintain the revenue stream. As a matter of fact, I got a letter, not a letter, but an email from them today. As a matter of fact, I got a letter, not a letter, but an email from them today, about signing off on their agreement to start, because they wanted to start moving on this thing right away, so. We would like to get this done tonight, if that's possible.
So if we didn't do anything tonight, there'll be an interruption in the revenue stream?
No, but we'd have to wait another two weeks, and they're going to have, that sets them back two weeks.
It'll be delayed.
In doing what, yeah, it'll definitely be delayed. Question is, I'm not sure how long.
I don't see anything in this resolution where it says the terms are set. I, the way I read this is that every five years, there's an increased rent, and this is just the initial term of five years.
Again, I apologize, because I'm not, I'm not as prepared to discuss this as I would be.
Look at page two, I think what you're looking at is the additional extensions provision, page two of the land lease agreement. On the bottom, it, it gets into detail about what happens at the end of the 25 years.
Yeah, under, under provision six, on page two, it says, "Annual rental for each such additional five-year term shall increase by $2,500 from the immediately preceding five-year term." That's, gives me my concern, because $2,500, 10 years from now, is going to be worth less, and it's going to be worth a lot less in 20, in 20 years, and I just wanted to compare it to the other existing contracts, not only for this provision, but also from the revenue that, that they're generating. So I would like to move the motion, not take any longer. Obviously, if it doesn't get a second, this has happened before, but I don't feel prepared to vote on this with the information I have at hand, and so if, if this motion is, I can't get a second, and can't get it approved, then to table it, then I do want to pull it, so that I can vote against it.
Yeah, this is the provision where if you don't give, if you forget to give notice, it automatically renews. Okay, so, however, later on, it talks about it could be terminated with three months' notice, after the renewal. Right? So in case someone forgets to send notice, right? It, you know, it renews automatically, however, we reserve the right to terminate it in the middle and renegotiate.
The terms within there, I mean, obviously, if you miss a deadline, with the terms that talks about what you can do if you, if you miss the deadline, then you move forward, you can do that. So I mean, there are options for the township, and options for the, for the leasing, lessor? Leasing.
Less, less, yeah.
Or the lessor, or the leasing.
So the question becomes, I'm sorry, and I think this is the question here, are we locked in? If we forget to give notice, at the end of the fourth, five-year extension, are we locked in? For another 25 years?
You can be.
You can.
Not for another 25 years, but you can be for another five.
Five-year term. Okay, I think that answers the concern here, in terms of the amount.
That's like that on any contract.
Well, no, it's just a provision.
Yeah.
It's just a provision that's thrown in there. So. But it goes to 2,500 instead of 2,000.
Is it 26, I think?
Actually, it's not just 2,500, I think it goes up.
It's a $2,500 increase.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, we're locked in for another five-year term at 2,500, but just one.
Not a 2,500, $2,500 increase, to the, to the last year's. Increase to the 32,000.
Okay, on the aggregate.
Right.
Yeah.
The aggregate increases every.
Got it.
Mr. Harris, I'm sorry, are you done, councilman?
Yeah, so I think we got the answer there, it renews for five years, right, if we forget to give notice.
And automatically, it's.
Right.
Mr. Harris, does the township make any use of this tower?
Do we make any use of it? Other than renting it out?
Revenue, generating revenue.
You know, we might have a repeater on there, I'm not sure. I think we might have a repeater on there.
Okay.
But, most of the stuff on the tower, I believe, are other carriers.
We're also looking to see if there's any more room where we can.
Well, there's a repeater on it, is Verizon charging us for using that tower?
No, the repeater is, Verizon is leasing the tower space from us.
Right.
They're paying, that's what they're paying us.
Right, no, I understand, I was saying, but we don't have to pay anything for our repeater to be sitting on that pole.
No, no, the repeaters work for our communication systems.
I think it's interesting that they call it a 125-foot stealth tree telecommunications tower, monopole. This is behind the firehouse at Woodland and Pleasant Valley. It looks like a mutant tree, it doesn't look like a stealth tree. It's not stealth.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, at this point.
I do have a motion on the table by Councilman Kukoviac. Do I have a second? I do not, so, the motion has failed, and councilman, you want to pull this? So that you can vote on it separately?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so, with the exception of resolutions A, D, and F, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution A, 112-15, resolution authorizing execution of agreement with Fairview Insurance Associates to provide services as broker of record, was pulled by Councilman Kukoviac.
Yes, thank you. Those of you who are watchers of the council know that I have been opposed to extending the contract to these folks without some sort of competition, to see what else is out there. They've been our broker of record since before the turn of the century. In the last four years, we have allowed them to earn commissions in excess of $1.4 million, and the contract has never been put out for any sort of competition, and so I'm just opposed to doing that, given the amount of money, and I just wanted to be able to vote against it.
Administration, administration like to respond?
I'm sorry, I was, I didn't even, what was the question? I was talking to Mr. Kaiser.
Fairview Insurance, the Fairview Insurance issue that the councilman pulled it, because he wants to be able to vote independently. Because he feels that the commissions have been out there, and they've been serving the township for a long time, right?
Without competition.
Without competition.
You have not put it out to bid with anybody else.
Right.
You don't have to. So we don't, and we're pretty, we like their services, we're very happy with their services, and that's how we stand with them.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution 112-15?
So move.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carina?
Yes.
Resolution 115-15, resolution authorizing a land agrees, I'm sorry, land lease agreement with Verizon regarding telecommunications monopole at the Woodlands Firehouse located at 280 Pleasant Valley Way. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you. I don't need to further belabor this, but I just don't feel like I have enough information. I'd like to compare this contract to all the others, and I don't have that information, so I certainly don't want to vote for it, so I just wanted to pull it.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt resolution 115? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Council President, I do have a concern about the automatic renewal provision. In my, and I just want to make sure that the language clearly states that if, in the event that the township forgets to provide notice, that it only renews for five years, not, not five years and then another four, five-year terms. And the way the language reads, it can give that impression, it says five years and for five-year terms thereafter, until terminated by either party.
So I just want to legally, and I don't know what kind of grounds we have to pick apart the actual agreement, since, you know, the resolution itself doesn't get into that detail.
What section, you're telling me back up?
Sure, I'm talking about the same section that we referenced, which is section, section six of attachment B, the land lease agreement.
Section six, and attachment B?
Yeah, that's, yeah, page two. Yeah, page two. Yeah, page two. So basically, it's an automatic renewal if written notice is not given three months prior to the end of the term. And what I would think is fair, is to allow it to renew for an additional term, but not for an additional term, and then five more five-year terms, as it reads. I just want to be clear, there's only one term.
That's not, that's not how I read it, it says, "This agreement shall continue in force upon the same governance terms and conditions for a further term of five years, and for five-year terms thereafter, until terminated by either party." That tells me that that's in perpetuity.
Right, and I have a, yeah, I have a concern.
Until terminated by either party.
Every five years.
So every party can terminate.
Three months' notice? Right. Any party can terminate within three months' notice, according to this, of course.
In the, in that term, in that renewal process.
At the end of the four- to five-year extension term, this agreement has not been terminated by either party. Which means if it hasn't been by either party, getting the other written notice of an intention to terminate at least three months prior to the end of such term, the agreement shall continue in force. So if we don't, if we decide not to terminate it, then the agreement can move forward. But obviously, we have the right to terminate the lease. And we, we would have to do that. At that time.
Right, if it's not done, it says, right, it should continue in force for a further term of five years, and for five-year terms thereafter, until terminated by either party, by giving the proper notice that we just mentioned.
Right, so that means, if that happened, if that happened, and one party gave you, what is it, 30 days' notice?
Yeah, three months.
Three months.
Then you can terminate the lease.
Good, so it could happen after renewal.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that that's.
Yeah, that's.
You're the attorney. The other thing is, this is a negotiated agreement, so both parties agreed on these terms, we can't unilaterally change the terms.
And that was my first question, yeah, because I'm, you know, I'm voting on the resolution, I'm not voting on the agreement, you're right.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution 115-15?
So move.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carina?
Yes.
Resolution 117-15, resolution authorizing execution of memorandum of understanding with West Orange Firemen's Mutual Benevolent Association, Local 28. There was some interest expressed by Councilman Kukoviac, as well as Councilwoman Spango and Councilwoman McCartney on this.
Okay, so I pulled this resolution, this is the memorandum of agreement. Appreciate all the effort on the part of the administration and the Firemen's Association to work on this memorandum. My question has to do with the insurance copay, and I think here it just needs a sentence. It's, this is insurance copay, Article 18. "It is the intent of the parties to agree to avoid any layoffs or demotions within the bargaining unit for the duration of this contract. The township agrees to no layoffs or demotions for contract year 2015. However, if layoffs or demotions become necessary in contract years 2016 and 2017, the township agrees to the 7.5% insurance contribution that was issued by the state shall be eliminated for all members in the bargaining unit on the day of layoff plan submitted to the New Jersey Civil Service Commission." So that was an agreement that was made, but I think there has to be a sentence that this reads as if then they are not contributing, but it, what happens, though, it reverts.
By law.
Okay, but that should be in here, that, it reverts back.
It's by law, New Jersey law says they have to contribute. That's why it's not in there. They have to, under chapter 78, they must contribute.
I just, for clarity purpose.
Specifically how much is the chapter 78? There's nothing vague about the decision, because if it reverts back to chapter 78, that's specifically, that's why we've been able to calculate the difference.
Yeah, if we were, if we ever put in chapter 78's calculations here, this thing would be 20 pages long, because there are different calculations for how much money you make.
I understand. I was just saying that for clarity's sake, that it would say it reverts back to chapter 78. As opposed to just, they're not putting in the seven and a half percent.
It has to, in other words, yeah, by law, it has to. If you're not in contract, and you don't have a difference, you automatically pay chapter 78 fees.
Technically, they're paying.
That was my question.
Technically, they are paying chapter, we calculate their chapter 78 obligation now, compared to their contract, and they pay, they pay the greater of the two.
Right.
So if, if, if she, if they should lose the seven and a half, then that calculation for the chapter 78 would be their contribution. So there's no, there's no, there's no doubt or ambiguity about that.
It's not necessary to write that, okay.
So, I'm sorry, thank you. So, the way this looks too, it seems that the FMBA is actually cooperating, we're able to keep those 10 additional firemen that should have been removed already, laid off already, with disagreement, this is a lot of township should retain.
That's our, that's our hope.
That's the hope, okay, so it's good, but it was, you know, so.
I, you know, I just would like to say that I think it was very honorable the way this contract was negotiated, not that we negotiate all contracts in an honorable manner. And I think that, based on the decisions that were made, their membership approved this contract. We discussed many issues on why we had to do what we had to do, and we were all in agreement on doing it the way we did it. So I think this is a pretty good contract. Us and for them.
Right, well, I believe the administration and the local, and the membership should be commended for this cooperative agreement, which benefits the residents of the township. So, thank you to both, it's good.
Thank you.
Any, on the.
That was my question.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yeah, if, if, I feel like the administration is more capable of just describing the general outline of this labor contract, just so that people know what's, what's going on, because I think this is the first one, the first contract we have in the current period, and I think we're out of contract on everybody. So this is likely to not set a precedent, but certainly have some influence over what the other
That's possible.
labor agreements might be coming down the road. But it basically is, the wage increases are similar to the previous four-year contract, which was zero and zero in the first two years, and then 2% and 2% in the, in the last two years. But again, I'm happy for you guys to describe maybe a couple of the other elements.
It's, it's a four-year contract, it's a 0022, over four years. There's, we gave them a slight increase in their holiday pay, which was 1.62%, I believe. They had five personal days, we cut that down to four personal days. And basically, that's the agreement. You know, it wasn't, there was no, it was all, I mean, it started out a year and a half ago with a lot of things on the table, and we narrowed it down to things that we felt could work for everybody. And we even have increases in the amount of time that they have to ask for to get those days. It used to be 72 hours, now it's 84, 86, I think. So I think it's a win-win for both sides, and my recommendation would be that you pull the contract, the memorandum of agreement.
Did the, the change between taking, taking back one of the personal days, and adding to the, the holiday pay, do those, how do those, I guess, combine, in terms of what's the final outcome financially for, for the town? Does that increase our costs? Does it decrease our costs?
You're talking about taking away a personal day versus the, the increase in their holiday pay? I mean, it depends on what the personal day, I mean, how many members do they have? I'd have to do the calculation, I really don't know.
It's actually, it's reasonably close.
I think it's pretty.
When you, when you take into consideration that most likely, this was going to save us not just eight, just a day, but maybe a day and a half in terms of overtime, you're talking, you're, you're, it's, it's close to a wash, I want to say it is. But, and that's, that's, I didn't do that calculation, but the, back my, the back of the napkin I just did, it's, it's pretty close.
Okay. The reason I ask is because, when you say 1.62% in the holiday pay, and this is the, this is the differential they get, the additional differential they get for working for the town, when the rest of the employees are not off, are not working. It actually is a much more substantial increase than 1.62%. That's the point increase, so it's going from, I think, 5.38% to 7%. So it's going from, I think, 5.38% to 7%.
It's 1.62.
Right.
Right, but it's, it's 1.62 percentage points, not 1.62% because 1% of.
It's the same thing. It's not 1.62% of their holiday pay, it's 1.62% of their, of their pensionable salary.
That's how it works, so it's the same.
I just want to make sure I understood the numbers. In the first year of the contract this year, there's no financial impact.
Correct.
Next year, when the, the holiday pay differential kicks in, that's going to result in an increase of $62,000 and change. And then the following week, the following year, does the increase go up by $81,000 from the new amount that includes $62,000?
From the previous, that, that's, $82,000 from the previous year. So from, if you, if you were, so if you were, if you want to know how much it was up from today, that you'd have to add those two together.
Okay, so in the second year of the contract, the total cost would be up roughly 142, 143,000?
From today.
From today.
From today.
And then, and then another increase in 2015. So if there is, if there is a layout for some reason, and we lose the seven and a half percent, I think that's seven and a half percent of the base pay.
Seven and a half percent of base pay, of, of pensional salary.
As, as opposed to the statutory, which is, I think, based on a percentage of the premium.
It's, it's a wild scale.
It's different for each employee.
Yeah.
Were you able to figure out which?
It's about $59,000 difference.
Yeah, it's about a $59,000 difference.
Okay, in whose favor?
Well, theirs.
And theirs.
But if we have, but if we have a reduction in force, let's say a reduction in force of 10 guys.
You're cutting 750 off the top, and you're losing 59,000, so you're getting a net gain of about $690,000 savings.
So that's not a substantial incentive to us not to, not to go forward with the layout if we think that that works?
We're going to try not to do that.
Right, I understand that, I understand. Okay. And, and this contract assumes that we're going to keep the 10 safer grant employees?
Assumes the level's at the sign.
And we're going to try and maintain the current level of service that we have with the ADA firefighters.
And, and just so everybody knows, during our budget discussions, and again, correct me if I can't remember this correctly, but the Safer Grant, which is a federal grant that's been paid for these 10 firemen positions for the last, I think this is the third year of the, of the grant, runs out in August, and the council voted unanimously to fund an extension for the rest of the year for the 10 firemen.
Correct.
So then we have to look at that in the next budget year.
The end of issue.
Okay.
So this agreement is consistent with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this resolution? No, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 117-15?
So moved.
Second. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kropiek?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carina?
Yes.
Ordinances on First Reading 2448-15 and ordinance amending Chapter 25, Sections 51.16 of the revised general ordinances of the township. This is a revision to the zoning ordinance. Is there a motion to approve on First Reading?
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kropiek?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carina?
Yes.
Can I say two words? So this is the ordinance about creating the sustainable, really, it's related to the master plan, the update from 2010. We have included a sustainable element during that master plan. We had introduced an ordinance that was a little more restrictive, according to our purchasing agent. The township really does everything it can to look at green purchasing policies. But again, that whole section about requiring the township to comply with this checklist that we're proposing has been eliminated, so this ordinance has been revised. And to me, it goes right back to what the planning board's initial intention was, to give us a tool to work with applicants that come before the planning board, to at least get them to consider green design standards in their application, and explain to us if they are not moving forward with a green design, to explain why. So this was really the original intent.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We should move.
Before, okay, before we adjourn. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and also congratulate the Mountaintop League Hockey Team for their great win and continued success. Just like to invite you for our next Township Council Meeting, which will be April 28th, right here in Council Chambers, at 6:30 for our conference agenda, and everybody have a great week, thank you. Make a motion to adjourn?
We should move.
All in favor?
Aye. Good night, West Orange.
Good night.